Five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening. We call to order the Madison County Board of Education meeting here on September the 11th at four o'clock PM. First, Mr. Rutherford, would you read us the vision?
Sure. Madison County Schools in partnership with the community strives to equip educators and students with the skills to lead by example, develop and speak with a unique voice, and explore their academic curiosity to make a positive impact on our community and world.
Thank you. Next, do we have anything from, okay. Moving on to our consent agenda, these are items that the board sees regularly and we are very familiar with. Items to be approved tonight on the consent agenda are: the minutes of the August 28th, 2025 meeting, claims, superintendent's personnel actions, leaves of absence, technology surplus, the following out-of-state field trips: the Madison Central High School FFA trip to Indianapolis, Indiana on October the 28th through the 30th, 2025, the Madison Central High School baseball trip to Crestview, Florida and Athens, Tennessee, on April 4th through the 10th of 2026, the Ferris Town Middle School Travel Club trip to New York City, New York on March the 5th through the 8th, 2026, three shortened school day applications, the Certified Evaluation Appeals Panel, and to reschedule the September 25th meeting to four PM. Are there any questions on these? If not, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Ms. Brock, Ms. Cobb? Motion by Ms. Cobb?
Ms. Brock will second it.
Ms. Brock seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we have our monthly reports, and that will begin with our instruction report tonight. Student Support Services workers Alexis Foley from Foley Middle School and Havana Thacker from Glen Marshall Elementary School will present the instruction report. And if I butchered your names, I'm sorry.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lexi Foley and I have the privilege of being the student support service worker at Foley Middle School. In my role, one of the most important things I get to do is help students navigate the tricky path of finding a balance. Middle school is a unique time full of social, emotional, and academic challenges. My goal is to work with them to find a way through the noise and pressure, helping them discover their strengths and develop strategies to overcome obstacles. A huge part of this work, and honestly, the most rewarding part, is developing genuine relationships and rapport. It's being a consistent, consistent presence and a safe space for students. So many young people feel invisible, and I believe my purpose is to make the unseen feel seen. This isn't just about the students, though. It also applies to my connection with the faculty and staff. We all play a role in a student's life, and when we support each other, we can better support them. Collaboration was a huge topic when I first took on this job, and it's become the core part of what we do. It doesn't matter if you work in the front office, the cafeteria, or in a classroom. Every single person here has a massive impact on our students. When we work together and provide a united front, students see that we are all on their team. They see that we have their best interest at heart, and that, that, that shared sense of purpose makes all the difference. By working together to build these relationships and foster collaboration, we're not just helping students survive middle school. We're giving them the tools and confidence to truly succeed in life. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Havana, and I have the privilege of working with our students at Glen Marshall Elementary School. When I started working with the Madison County Board of Education, I started as a substitute teacher. So I had the opportunity to travel around to all the different schools, different grade levels, to experience, hey, where do I really want to be? Do I really want to do this? I fell in love at Glen Marshall Elementary School, and one of the reasons why was teamwork. And she mentioned how important it is as faculty and staff to be a part of a team. And as part of that team, that includes students. I grew up under the teaching that children are meant to be seen and not heard. It has its place, it has its reasons, but when you are the student support services worker, it gives you the superpower and the ability to hear children, and not only hear them, which is the ability to collect sound, but to listen to them. And when we learn to listen to children and see things from their perspective, we have the ability to move mountains. I think about how many issues we have as adults that we have trouble with dealing on a daily basis, whether it's social skills, communication, sharing feelings and emotions, listening and following directions. Everyone is different. Everyone has needs. So as student support services worker, what I love is that we have the opportunity to help everyone in the building. It's not the acronyms, it's not the numbers, 504 or IEP. It is literally everyone. Because we all know there is a student who doesn't qualify for those things. They're either a little too high, a little too low. There is a reason. So we have the opportunity to help everyone. So I love being able to learn them, learn their personalities, because once we learn them and they see that we are taking the time to listen to them, they're more apt to listen to us. If we are patient with them, they are going to be patient with us. And it's all about making sure they succeed, and we have to understand them before they can fully succeed and learn what their superpower is. So I look forward to walking in every single day. At this moment in time, I can go ahead and tell you, some people's like, well, why do we have them in this position? Just since our first day, I have seen more than 150 students on a one-on-one basis for something, whether it's behavior, whether it's academics, they need a movement break, they have something going at home. So our children are now faced with a lot more things than what we were, especially considering our first graders right now, they are COVID children. So when we were able to go outside and play, go to the park, go to the library, and be able to develop those social skills and how to be around people, they don't necessarily have those tools just yet. So I like that we're able to be a little bit more patient with them and get them where they need to be so they can be successful as a whole, like she said, not just at school, but also at home and in our communities. So I thank you all, and we appreciate you all for developing this position so that we can help those kids find their superpower. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice. Good.
Alexa and Havana, that is, that is the reason we made those positions. And nothing makes me happier. You're out there listening to kids and helping kids, and that's what we needed so desperately.
What you guys are doing is so important to every one of us up here, trying to fit the needs of those kids. And, and we could see there was a desperate need. And we just, I thank you so very much for what you all are doing, because it sounds like you're doing exactly what we had in mind. So thank you.
That is amazing that you've already seen 150 students. That is incredible, and I commend you guys.
Well, I think it's very good that we're getting to hear what's going on with these, because I think this is our second set that we've had. And, you know, it's questionable. Everybody's like, what do they do, what do they do? And you gave very good explanations of what you are doing and how it's working, so I appreciate you.
And not just the ones with numbers. It's everybody.
I like that.
There's some kid every day that has something going on. They just need to talk to somebody, and that's what you all are. And it's great. It's fabulous. I've, I've heard things numerous times about all the different goings-on at schools and how you all are able to intervene and take care of the situation, and then a kid is smiling instead of screaming. So it's great.
Such an important job.
Yep.
We hope you'll come back.
The collaborations and relationship piece, can't get much better than that. The college kids here who are witnessing this, I mean, that's two phenomenal examples of what we would like to see come in our buildings. I mean, that's all you can ask, because, you know, like we've all conveyed here, kids come, of all shapes and sizes, they come in, and, you know, somewhere on the spectrum, thrilled to death, days miserable, you know? And, you know, like you said, some don't even know how to go outside and play or interact with others, because when they get home, they're just like this, until they have to go to bed. Well, they may not go to bed until one or two o'clock, you know? But I appreciate the board for seeing this as such a need that we implemented it mid-year, which is unheard of. We've got 15 positions. These are two of the 15 folks that are, that are with us. And it was their job to do exactly what they talked about today. You know, I could really do a professional development with you two girls and take you around to the schools and say, this is how it's supposed to be done. And I think, you know, it's, it's very positive, and that's what we love to hear. I appreciate you.
I think on the collaboration part, I think when Alexis was speaking, Havana was standing with her the whole time. She was like, yep, that's exactly what we do. Yep, that's it. I mean, so you could see her reaction to agreeing with everything that she was talking about, and that just shows how their collaboration has worked, and they're all on the same page.
And you said you substituted first? That's a great idea. Go ahead. Dr. Rambow is here. He's our HR man. So you're college, so it's a good way to get, because you get out of school December 30ish. We're in till like the 19th. It's a great way to go ahead and, and get in a class and see if it's really something you want to do, especially the level. Some people think, I want to be a middle school teacher. Make sure you go to middle school and check that out, okay? I was a middle school guy, so I can say that. High school, same way, elementary, I mean, they don't stop, you know, especially the little ones. And we'll pay you handsomely for it, okay? It's give you some Christmas money. So if you've got enough hours, we'd love to have you. And it's a great way for you to learn how things work, how kids work, how teachers work. It's a, it's a good eye-opener for, for each of them.
That's a good.
Thank you.
I hope we can have them more. Have them, two more. Keep coming.
We'll do it.
That's intended. Okay, moving on. 5B construction report. Jonathan Smith with Branson Construction will be presenting an update on our Madison Middle School project and our new Waco Elementary School project.
I want to give you a quick update on the projects going on. Start with Madison Middle. Obviously, the school itself, or you're in that school, we're still down the athletic fields. Should everything complete down there in November, of course, that schedule was additional four months past the original schedule. But as you can see there, that's not letters in the field, that it looks like, but that's the sprinkler. That is the, that's a soccer, no, that's a football field there. You can see grass starting to come in, we've got grass, some on it. This is kind of a shot of both of them. You can see a little bit better, the grass starting to come in. Both of those have some sprinkler systems on them, so. Start to get a pretty good stand of grass. The final paving in the back part is going to be done the first part of October. We're on track for that. They're going to put the surface down on the track, probably around the first of October, too, because asphalt had to set for a number of days before they could do that and make sure it was cured out. So that's coming along nicely. Fencing is going in. We're, we're painting on the buildings. This is the softball field. They've got, pretty much down to subgrade, they'll start fine grading those areas. You can see it's starting to take shape, fencing going in, a lot of the sidewalk. The buildings around it, like I said, we're painting in there now, ready to start setting fixtures in the restrooms and other areas. This is the baseball field. You can see it too, final grading, almost complete on it. And they'll be ready to start laying sod in those areas. So those are coming along really nice. There's a shot of both of them together, softball and baseball. But those are coming together and shouldn't barge anywhere. There shouldn't be a problem to have those, I'm starting in November and have those complete on schedule. So that's kind of a report on Madison Middle. Any questions on Madison Middle?
It looked a little greener than that picture was. That's very interesting.
Well, when you're out tied, too, with the ground, when you're out tied, you're looking right down on it, and you're down at the ground.
It looked pretty rough.
Yeah, it's a little greener when you're down there, but you see the birds out, you see the brown spots, so. But it's coming in good.
Hey, they'll play football and anything.
Waco Elementary, of course, I said to you last time, we had to pad in, but we have concrete going in now. So footings and foundations are going in. That's looking towards kind of the front of the building. Off to the right side, that's the area of the gym. We're starting that way and working our way to the back and then around to the left. So footings are going in. We're pouring concrete every day. They're either pouring the lean concrete down to the footers, and then the next day they're coming back pouring the walls on top. So concrete's going every day. That's kind of a side shot. You can see there, you can see the lean concrete to the left and up on the upper side is where the foundation walls are going in. So been real productive. That's the underground retention area. That's where all the stormwater runoff is going. That's all in. As you can see, they're getting that covered up. It gets covered up with stone first, and the fabric goes over it, then we'll start filling dirt. You can see them starting, starting to bring dirt over that. Probably by the end of this week, that should be totally covered up. This was just taken two days ago, but they've done quite a bit since then. So the weather we've had has definitely helped. We need a little rain, but it's, it's still been pretty good weather. That's just overall shot of the site there at Waco. So still a lot of material there. We'll start putting in storm lines here in the next few weeks and going really well over at Waco. Any questions at Waco?
Appreciate you.
The geothermal wells, we're going to get started on those, back started on those, fall break week. We're going to do a lot of the work down at Madison Southern while they're on fall break week. A lot of the work that goes under the parking lot is going to happen near fall break week. And they'll, we'll start drilling wells there first, because obviously that's the first renovation project. So that will be the first focus for the wells, and then they'll start going to the other schools after that. So that's kind of where we're at for the geothermal wells. And talking about the other project, Foley Middle, Madison Southern, the HVAC renovations, that bid date is Thursday, September 25th. We had a pre-bid this past Tuesday. Probably had, Chris is probably what, 20 people there, probably 20 contractors there. We had a good number at the pre-bid. So bid date is set for Thursday, September 25th. So any questions on any of them?
Seems to be been for a long.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll have our monthly finance reports with Mark Woods, our CFO.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
I'm not used to saying it. It's usually, you know.
Good evening.
Good evening. All right, well, we'll start with our bank reconciliation. As of August 31st, the district ended with a reconciled balance of $116,666,816.86. Slightly up, but we do have some construction money. We're holding on, so we're a little bit up where we're, we were this time last year. Of the reconciled balance, the district has $38,743,527.80 in investments. Those rates range from 4.02 to 4.5. I keep watching those as they come to maturity. We've got a couple that'll be coming up in the month of October, so I will look at those. If we can hold on to them, we'll hold on to them. If not, we'll bring them back in for cash flow. Always negotiate rates as we go into that. So we have one T bill, and that is on the construction money, and that will be coming back in, because we're nearing the completion of that. So we will bring that money back in. In addition, the board received the balance sheet and the revenue and expense report for August 31st. I've looked through that. For where we're at this time of the year, we're tracking really high on supplies. We're supposed to track really high on supplies, because we got school kicked off. So we're doing really good at this point.
Any questions? Okay, then next we'll move into our action agenda. And first on our action agenda is to approve the monthly financial reports as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Rutherford. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Ms. Cobb. All in favor say aye. Motion carried. Thank you. 6B is to approve our Head Start memorandum of agreement. So anybody having questions about that one? It's just a standard thing we do each year. So the motion would be to approve the 2025-2026 local Head Start memorandum of agreement and service contract for cooperation and full utilization of Head Start.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Burford. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Brock. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. 6C, create and ratify two LBD teaching positions. This is, the motion we'd entertain would be to create and ratify one special ed LBD teacher position at Madison Central High School and one position at Shannon Johnson Elementary School. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Rutherford. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Brock. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carried. Wow, this is short. Next, we have our superintendent's report.
All right. It is almost midterm. Unbelievable. But we're, we're gaining on it. We've got homecoming parades and games this week. Matter of fact, we're leaving here and going to Madison Southern's parade, and their homecoming is tomorrow. Friday, we have Madison High Night at Madison Central. Day chock full of festivities, starting tomorrow morning at eight o'clock at Madison Central. And we've got a golf scramble, we've got a women's luncheon, we've got a tailgate tomorrow afternoon. For all those folks, all the alumni from Madison High School, we hope, we see them in full force and they'll have their purple on, because it is Purple Night tomorrow. I think the football team at Madison Central is going to wear purple jerseys and have the Madison logo on their helmet. So that'll be, that'll be a really cool day tomorrow. Huge thanks to Ignite South, Sarah Burns, for bringing in the medevac helicopter to holler police, EMTs, ambulance, and firefighters for having, for lack of a better term, a show and tell day on Monday. That was incredible. It, the Ignite folks got to come and see it. Ferris Town, since they're right there on campus, got to come over, especially the eighth graders, just to see the spectacle that it was, just a helicopter landing and then taking off and explaining what they do when disaster strikes, and you got to have that. Firefighters, ambulance, all the folks were there, and the kids loved every minute of it. And it also gave, you know, a good educational piece of, is this something that I want to do? I had no idea that a fighter firefighter uniform and the boots weighed that much. I, there's no way I could be, no way.
Ninety pounds.
I put that on, and that's without the oxygen thing.
Oh, it's ninety pounds.
Ninety pounds. I mean, I had no clue. Just that kind of thing that you don't realize unless you're there and experiencing. So that was a fantastic day on Monday. And then also, I want to give a huge shout out to our first responders today. We had an incident at Madison Southern, and we had state police, brave police, fire, we had over 30 folks there within a matter of three minutes. Now, if you went on Glade Road and saw the lights and saw the cars, you were probably like, oh my gosh, this is crazy. But to me, it makes me feel good that the community is so concerned about our community and kids and staff, that they were there at the drop of a hat. So it was, it was a good thing that come out of a meaningless phone call that we got, that we have taken care of. But a huge thanks to those folks for responding in that fashion this afternoon. Also, we have football being played at Clark Morse tonight. So huge thanks to our maintenance folks. We've got scoreboards, we've got lights that'll light up from here to Kroger's. So that'd be special for subdivision back there. But they'll be playing football there. I think it's, I don't know how many years it's been, but it's been a while. So that, that's exciting for the Clark Morse Braves to have their own football soccer to play. And then baseball and softball will be played this spring. So it's moving, moving forward with that athletic facility at Clark, Clark Morse. That's my superintendent report.
Okay, thank you so much. If we didn't have to go to the parade, we could go to the ballgame.
I know.
Okay, comments from the board?
I'll speak up just real quickly, reiterating what Superintendent Neely said about the, putting our staff and students and their safety first today. I am sad to say that it happened, but I am so thankful that they were there so quickly. And it's a shame that these things go on, and it's a shame that we have to respond to them because of just the dramatic, someone just playing a prank. But I'm just thankful that, you know, it, we do take it very seriously every single time. It's not just something that we go, oh, this is a joke. We're not going to check it out. So I hope everyone realizes how important their children's safety is. And we just, we don't just do the fun stuff, you know? We're here for the safety of it all, too. So I just want to thank all the first responders and the resource officer that was there today, front and center.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Next is executive session. We'll enter into executive session to discuss future acquisition or sale of real property for which publicly would likely affect the value per KRS 61.8101B. So the motion would be to move into executive session to discuss future acquisition or sale of real property for which publicity would likely affect the value per KRS 61.8101B. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Cobb, second by Mr. Rutherford. Do, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. We are now on executive session. We are now in executive session.